Good evening and welcome to the April 14th, 2015 school committee meeting. This meeting is being recorded by East Hampton Public Access Cable. The school committee would like to recognize and thank Tim Riley for taping tonight's production. East Hampton Public Access Cable stations Channels 5, 19, and 20 is looking for volunteers. If anyone's interested in helping to tape city government meetings, please contact Kathy Lynch at (413) 203-1360. Superintendent Fowlesby, do you have some announcements for us?
Yes, I do. The next school committee meetings are April 28th, May 12th, and June 9th and 23rd, 2015. Meetings will begin now at 6:30 PM. The Special Education Parent Advisory Council will meet on the following dates in the conference room on the second floor at 50 Pace and Avenue, May 13th and June 10th. There is no school April 20th through 24th due to Patriots Day and spring break. There is a half day of school on Friday, May 1st due to Teacher Professional Development Day. There is no school on Monday, May 25th due to Memorial Day. And at this time, the last day of school is scheduled for Wednesday, June 24th, and we expect that that will be the last delay of the last day of school. Yeah, exactly. And I would also like to take this opportunity to announce some pretty exciting news. Brian Delaney, one of our students at East Hampton High School, has been given several prestigious awards this year. Brian has received the President's Volunteer Service Award in recognition of his volunteer service to his school and the community. And Brian has also received the SAD, Students Against Destructive Decisions, Student of the Year Award for his work in forwarding the vision of SAD to empower young people to make positive decisions that advance their health and safety. We are all so very proud of Brian and his achievements, and we congratulate him.
Excellent. Okay, moving on, we have Peter Gunn filling in for us in Laura's absence to handle our secretarial duties with some correspondence.
We do. There's a series of announcements related to the Spring 2015 College Planning events from the East Hampton High School Guidance Office. A series of events happening at the school, all of which, I won't read through all of these, there are many examples of things that are coming up in this month and into May that will help students with their college planning. I'm assuming that we'll be able to make this available on the website? Is that right? Or it's part of the record of tonight's meeting?
It should also be on the high school website.
It should also be on the high school website. So, families of juniors?
On the calendar.
On the calendar.
On the high school calendar.
Excuse me, thank you.
On the high school calendar.
On the high school calendar. Thank you. And it's primarily designed for East Hampton High School juniors, but all families who are interested in the college planning process probably should scan through this so that they know what lies ahead as opportunities that will be provided for them in the future.
My guess is it's probably listed on the guidance part of the website as well.
Right. Right. And it's terrific. There's a great array of things and reminders about important entrance exams and other things that students need to be thinking about now even if their college experience wouldn't begin until the fall of 2016. Now they've got to be underway with a lot of these things. So, that's the correspondence that we have for this meeting. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then we do have some gifts. Do I do?
Read those?
I can read them.
Yeah.
Please vote to accept with gratitude and appreciation the following gifts. From Florence Savings Bank, $100 to the East Hampton High School Model UN. From the St. Patrick's Committee of Holyoke, $500 to the East Hampton High School Band. And from C&amp;P Donuts, the local Dunkin' Donuts, $100 to the East Hampton High School Students Against Destructive Decisions.
Second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we invite anyone from our audience who would like to come and speak to us to do so. And it doesn't look as though anyone is here to do that, so we will move on to the next segment of our agenda.
Deb, can I just stop?
Yes.
I was wondering if I could make a comment, and I think Ms. Mango, did you want? You were raising your hand.
Under my radar.
Okay. I just saw. May I just make a selfish plug for something? You all are going to get invites, but before all your calendars get filled up, I am on the East Hampton Dollars for Scholars. I'm a member of that group. And our award ceremony is on Wednesday, May 20th, at the high school auditorium at 7:00. And it's when we give out the awards to East Hampton residents. It's graduating seniors as well as students that are already in school. But it's just, you know, it's about an hour long, and you can come and hear where everybody's going or what everybody's doing, but it's just a great thing to see what's going on with East Hampton students, so we'd love to have you there.
What time is it?
7:00.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to our finance subcommittee report.
The minutes are in the packet from the past couple of meetings, and most of it we've already discussed in the full committee. They're a little tardy, I apologize for that. Otherwise, nothing new to report.
Any questions on the minutes that were submitted? Okay. How about the policy subcommittee?
Nothing to report.
Okay. And our CES representative is not here this evening, so we'll move on to our student activities update.
Thank you, Ms. Lusniya. Previously, the Student Council and Key Club have raised over $350 for the organization's Stop Hunger Now. Those donations will go towards supplying food to impoverished areas, both in the United States and abroad, as Ms. Fowlesby previously stated. Brian Delaney was awarded the Students Against Destructive Decisions National Student of the Year, and as a result, he's been invited to speak at a national conference this summer in Nashville, Tennessee. And additionally, baseball and softball seasons are now underway. We say "Go Eagles" to them. Upcoming, on May 2nd is the East Hampton Community Cleanup Day. Clubs and organizations from both the high school and the community as a whole will be out and about cleaning up the streets of East Hampton, making everything a little bit prettier for spring. On Friday, May 8th, the East Hampton High School Prom will be held at the Law Cabin at the top of the mountain. On May 28th and 29th shall be the finals and last day for seniors at East Hampton High School, followed on June 6th by East Hampton High School graduation.
Some exciting events coming up.
Very.
Lots of good things. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And can we congratulate the Mr. East Hampton?
Oh, that's right. Do you want to tell us about that?
Yes, the Mr. East Hampton annual pageant, if you will, went off on Friday night very smoothly, and the 2015 Mr. East Hampton was crowned Kyle Richard.
I have to say, that was so much fun attending that event. It was incredible. I just laughed so hard. It was just entertainment from moment one on. It was amazing. And it was so exciting to see so many of the faculty involved and students, and just what a great EHS community event. That was incredible.
We always have a full house for that event. Very popular.
Yeah, it was amazing. It was my first time, and in previous years, I've always tried to go, but they were always sold out before I could get a ticket, so now I know. Book early. Buy your tickets early. Thank you, Brian. Superintendent Fowlesby?
We have a couple of reports this evening. One that's not on your agenda is Ms. Toni Mango and Ms. Karen Allen from our high school are going to give you a little presentation on the Paris trip that was in your packet the last time, and that she'll be taking a vote on later on the agenda. So, Ms. Mango, Ms. Allen, if you'd like to come to the podium.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here today, or this evening. I wanted to take the opportunity to talk a little bit about the trip that we proposed. We're currently proposing to go to Paris, Provence, and Cote d'Azur for next year. This World Language Club has been traveling for over 20 years, previously with Madame Bage, and this is my second year doing it. We're going to Italy this year, and I proposed France next year because we, in keeping in mind what we've been doing in the past, is doing Europe. My goal is to eventually go back to South America and to explore different parts, but I was trying to stick to the, sort of, the rotation that we've had for a while. I find that the program offers a lot of great opportunities to the students, both students who are pursuing that particular language, but also the other language that's taught, whether they're taking Spanish or French. It gives them an opportunity for them to be able to really appreciate the culture and sort of bring what they've studied or what they've read about to life. And also, it offers an opportunity to students who maybe unfortunately didn't have the opportunity to take the language or pursue it as far as they had wanted to because of their schedule, CTEC, or maybe students with special needs didn't have the opportunity to take the language. And we wanted to include them in that. I think it would be best if maybe you asked me some specific questions, and I could try to answer them, or if you want, I could keep talking about what my intentions are for the trip. How would you like me to proceed?
Do you have a question?
Do you have a question? Yes, ma'am.
Do you have a limit on how many students that you can take?
Currently, I, we like to not take more than about 18 to 20. It becomes a little chaotic getting on and off the trains, going, in fact, Brian can attest to that, he was with us last year. And I was, it's a lot getting on and off different vehicles. It's like planes, trains, and automobiles. But it's a great opportunity, and one of the things I always say to students is, my goal obviously is for you to be able to be fluent in the language. That would be my ideal. But my realistic goal is for you to become a global citizen, for you to be able to partake and understand different cultures and realize that you're part of something that's much bigger than your immediate next-door neighbor. And I think these trips allow this. I'm not sure if you had any other questions for me.
I would love to speak on behalf of the World Language Club. I was a part of the trip last year that went all across Spain, and I have to say that it was a great learning experience for me and for the rest of the children on the trip. I, for one, had taken up to Spanish 5 at the time, the highest level Spanish language that our school offers. And I think that because of the trip, I've been quite inspired to continue my education in Spanish into college and possibly pursue a career in Latin America and Europe. So, I just have to say that I agree that the trip is a great experience for students looking to get involved with something much bigger than East Hampton and much bigger than the United States as a whole. So, I look forward to seeing how this trip goes.
Thanks, I appreciate that, Brian. I didn't know that you were part of the committee, but thanks. One thing that Brian commented on is, there's statistics that show that a lot of students that actually have been involved in travel abroad, whether it's to study abroad or just travel, it shows that they are more inclined to take careers that actually involve travel, careers that actually involve international business. Also, statistics show that they end up getting into careers that pay a higher scale, a higher rate. And again, they stress the statistics, the global factor where they become part of the world. It's not just their immediate surroundings. So, it's a great opportunity.
And this is the second trip that I will be on this year. I went two years ago to Italy, and I'll be going again this year. And the changes that I saw in the students that we took with us from the beginning of the trip to the end of the trip were absolutely phenomenal. They were so tentative when they first even got to Logan Airport. It was like, by the time we got back, they were world travelers. They were world travelers. They were confident, they were very vibrant young adults, and it's, you could tell that traveling had done wonders for these people. Yep, I apologize. That's okay.
One of the things that I like to do is, I don't know if you recall, Brian, the highs and the lows when we were coming back from the trip. I love listening to what really impacted them, whether it be a positive or even something that sometimes is negative. But that ability to express themselves and to recognize it, that's something that transcends that trip. And that's something that you look for when you hire someone. Tell me what your strength is, what your weakness is, what you'd like to work on. This is something that goes beyond that particular trip. It's a skill, and it's an experience that hopefully they embody and they carry with them throughout. And that's why I like doing these, all these places. I always tell people, say, "Oh, you're so excited." Not for me. I'm excited for the students. I've been to a lot of these places, and I love them, and I will continue to go with them. But what I enjoyed, and I think I commented when we came, I said, "I just like watching their faces." When they see something that is just...
That they've only seen in pictures, or they've seen it in a movie.
It's really amazing.
Yeah, it's amazing. And then, one of the nicest things is, it intermingles peer groups. They are not with their, with their normal people that they hang around with every single day. They bond with a whole different group of people, and it's just so good for them.
And they start looking out for each other and helping each other. And it's really positive in a lot of different ways. It teaches them their limitations and their strengths.
It does.
So, I could go on forever, but I'm sure you've got lots to do.
Ms. Mango, I was going to ask you, last time when your request came through, one of the reasons we wanted to learn more information was because Mr. Benoit had just been here and was recommending the exchange program for Paris also. And we think, you know, both programs seem like wonderful opportunities for our students, and we certainly would like to support both programs. But we were just wondering about if you could talk to us about any communication you've had with him and how these two programs could successfully coexist at the same time without detracting one from the other.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that you brought that up, and I want to state that I feel both programs are wonderful, and I've discussed with Monsieur Benoit in length about what our expectations are for the department. We're working together to try to build the numbers and to really get students involved with foreign languages. And we've talked about what they could pose if they could be, you know, sort of competition for each other. And we both see it as completely two different programs. The study abroad program, in essence, is strictly an academic. There is a small component that is a travel component, but if you think about it, there are four weeks that the students have to really dedicate. Two weeks are being hosts here in the United States for the students that are coming here, and two weeks while they're there. One week is, maybe a little bit more than a week is academic, and then they have a little bit of travel time. The other big difference is that, besides the time, is there's a certain number of students that actually would be accepted to this program. It isn't open to the entire population. It's specifically for French students. It's specifically for students at a certain level. They may apply, but unfortunately, might not get accepted. I don't know what the criteria he's going to use right now, this being the first year, but eventually, it is a study abroad program where you go into a school and you're actually doing the curriculum that the other students are doing. So, it entails a lot of different things. The other is that this particular trip offers the opportunity to the rest of the community, not just that population of French studying students. It offers it for the Spanish student who just really loves to travel and understands culture. As I mentioned earlier, it also offers the opportunity to that CTEC student or that special ed student that, for whatever reason, was not able to stay in the foreign language classes, but has a love, an interest, of different people and different cultures. And I would hope that we could offer all of our community an opportunity, not just a small group. So, those are some of the differences. But Mr. Benoit and I are talking all the time. I mean, we're changing things up, and I support that program full-heartedly, and I would not want to take away from him, and I know he wouldn't want to take away from me. So, I think they could both coexist because they have two different aims.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
I just, I thank you so much for what you do, because my son had gone a couple of years back.
Yes.
And he had a great time, and it is just such a great experience for the kids to go.
They come back changed.
Yes.
Yes. They do.
They definitely do.
And I like that. I call it a precursor to college life sometimes. They get their feet wet to see, can I handle it, can I not? You know, dealing with different personalities. It's a great, it's a great experience if they can do it.
So, when are you leaving this week?
We're leaving Saturday. With my antibiotics, because I have a little bit of a cold. Well, I have bronchitis, but yeah, I'll go all the way.
Have fun.
I think it'll be great. It'll be great. Thank you for the opportunity.
I just want to say, real quick, my question lasted, the last thing was more about the procedure.
Yes.
And the forms that we've got and signatures that were missing, and not about the integrity of the program. Having spent time in a classroom with you, I know you're doing the best there is to do out there, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. I apologize for that. I don't know what happened, but we fixed it, and we can go from there.
So, I had two questions, one for you, and then if it's possible, I'd like Principal Peron to speak, too. The cost here, as was true in the other program that we discussed, is significant, right? It's over $2,700. What has your experience been with financial aid? I mean, the more we talk about the wonderful nature of these programs, the more I think we want them to be available.
To a lot of students.
To a lot of students. So, how do we, how do we achieve that?
This year, well, there's lots of different things. One, I do some fundraising to offset the total cost. I do fundraising along with Ms. Allen, she's helped me, and we've raised the money for the busing from here to the airport where they don't, the students do not have to pay. In addition, we take, we get all the money for the tips for the tour guides and for, you know, bus drivers, so that's not an expense that the students have to incur. This year, to try to get more students involved, I wrote an ELF grant, and we were able to offer some students some other opportunities. It is my goal to write another grant this summer to provide, hopefully, I'd like to take some students to the Winter Carnival in Quebec. And so, I'm working on writing another grant, maybe, you know, be creative with some fundraising. They're a little bit more affordable, and it still gets the students to do some traveling. So, this is what I'm trying to work in so that everybody has a little bit of taste of, you know, travel.
And we also give students an opportunity to fundraise.
Yes.
We have a couple of casino trips that we offer.
The parents.
That we offer the parents to...
The parents did them. Parents did them.
Yes.
Parents sponsored them.
They sponsor it, and they take over everything. We've offered things like spaghetti suppers, things that the different groups of kids can take on for themselves and raise money for. So, there's plenty of opportunity for fundraising for these kids.
Also, the students themselves, it's a great skill. You start to see them, okay, I asked for all these things for my birthday, for Christmas, for this, for that, and they say, "I've asked my family to now start donating towards my trip." I have another student who has a little part-time job, and she said, "Well, how would..." I said, "Well, why don't you write a little jar, and you know, instead of tips, you say, 'Help me go to France.'" Put that down, you know, different ways. And then there's another student who's interested, and I told him that if he wants to, I will work with him, and you know, while the other students fundraise a certain way, I might make his percentage of his fundraiser more, because I want him to go. But for now, I'm limited in what I can do because there aren't any set funds. But it's nice to see what the students start to sort of put into perspective, prioritize, and that's another skill, you know, when you go to college.
It's really important for these kids to take responsibility for this trip, and if they absolutely can't come up with the money, then we try to find a way. But it's really important for them to be responsible for getting that money one way or the other. And I think it makes a huge difference if they realize that they are paying for this trip.
And they appreciate it more.
And they appreciate the trip. And they appreciate what goes on during the trip. They appreciate the tours, they appreciate what they're seeing, because they've actually invested themselves in it. It's not a gift. Someone hasn't just handed it to them. So, sometimes for these kids, that's the first time it's happened. So, it's a real experience for them.
I'm not sure if I answered everything that you had wanted.
I have a question for Dr. Peron, but we can wait on that.
Would you want to finish your question? It was a two-question.
Well, I'm just, I'm curious about, from your perspective, about the two trips and how they complement as opposed to compete, because you've endorsed both of them, right? You've given your approval to both of them. So, how do you see them both working, and what should we be thinking about as we deliberate voting in favor of this? Are there, are there any concerns that we should have from your perspective?
I don't have concerns about the two competing, just because, as Ms. Mango stated, the French exchange is really an academic exercise where students that are in an upper-level French class have an opportunity to immerse themselves in the French culture and then have that exchange happen, where the French students are then going to come over and experience East Hampton, East Hampton High School. The World Language Club has been doing this for 20 years with this specific purpose of being inclusive for all students. So, it's not just about going to Spain with Spanish speakers or students that aspire to be Spanish speakers, but anyone that has an interest can be a part of the World Language Club. So, I really view these things differently, purposeful from each perspective, but I don't think they're going to compete. I know the cycle kind of met serendipitously this year, where we're going to France in the World Language Club, and Mr. Benoit, we just hired, wanted to bring his exchange program that he has had great success with at his other school to East Hampton High School, and he is very excited about it. In my conversations with Ms. Mango, this isn't just about Europe. This is about South America, Central America, and really, World Language Club being more broad than it has been in the last few years since I've started East Hampton High School. So, I don't see them as competing above and beyond maybe a couple of students that might be upper-level French students, but they get the same experience in that they're going to have that opportunity to go to France, to go abroad. So, I just, I don't see it as a problem. And I do support both.
Any other questions, mayor?
I just have a comment. I think it sounds extremely wonderful. I thank you. You definitely go above and beyond, and these, to me, are travel of different cultures, are memories of a lifetime.
Yes.
And I think it's wonderful that these are opportunities that are offered, and they certainly sound like two different things, and the more opportunities, the better.
Yes. I think it's a great...
Thank you for all that you do.
It's also a great reflection on our high school to be able to offer so many different opportunities and to appeal to so many different students. Thank you for that coverage.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
And Dr. Peron, since you're up there already.
I figured, I just stayed.
Would you like to give us...
Just as a, just as a matter of procedure, just so that it's clear, later when this comes up, then we'll have our discussion about other questions than those that we would put to the folks who've spoken so far, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So, Dr. Peron now is going to give us an update on his school improvement goals.
I am. And I shared with you three documents. The first was just my goals, and I should say, part of my goals. My professional practice and student learning goal are separate from this presentation. Those are, Ms. Superintendent Fowlesby and I focus on those. But the school improvement goals are three, and I shared those with you. I also shared with you two documents. One was the updated DESI graduation rate and dropout rate, and the other was an AIR report done on East Hampton High School. And the reason I shared the second document with you is because it kind of captures the goals that I've set this year that kind of fall under the umbrella that the superintendent set, that my goals encapsulate the goals that my teachers set, and we're really trying to be cohesive in our focus. And so, the document that I shared with you from AIR really highlights, I believe, the first two school improvement goals, which focus on data and the instructional core. And the fact that our data team and professional development team have created a platform where our goals as a school coincide underneath the superintendent's district-wide goals for the best effect of our students, improving instruction and using data to kind of drive everything we're doing, whether it's professional development or intervention strategies in the classroom or school-wide. So, I, the first two goals really are spoken to by that artifact that I shared. I need to communicate that that is a draft. It is not a final document yet, so it's not really shareable beyond this form. I got permission from the AIR team to share it with you as an artifact for me, and they graciously granted that. The second piece that I gave you was the graduation rate and the dropout rate, and we've reached, we've, every year, if you look at the data, we've gone up in our graduation rate and down in our... and down in our, in our dropout rate, which is indeed part of the third goal that I have set for, for the school, the school improvement goal. It's probably, needs to be stated that the school council is a part of the development of school improvement goals as part of what the legislature says they're supposed to do. So as we move forward, there's discussion within the school council to change one of the goals and we'll talk more about that this year. But I just wanted everyone to understand that the school improvement goals, it's not just some autonomous, when they created thing. It's, it's created under the umbrella that's set by the superintendent. It's created by an analysis of data and it's created in kind of collaboration with and support of the, the school council. I feel that as we progress through the year, as the AIR report would, would dictate, the work that we've done as a, a data team and a professional development team and a team of educators at East Hampton High School is excellent and it's being recognized at the state level. We've been invited to the spring convening in May to present our professional development platform and data teamwork at, at DESI's spring convening. So it's really exciting that we're getting recognized as a school, as the cutting edge really of professional development. And I, you know, we owe a lot to the, you know, the ability that the superintendent has given us to work collaboratively, to kind of empower people for leadership. She empowering me to be a leader within the school, me empowering teachers to be leaders with, with each other and kind of step forward into roles on the data team, the professional development team. And then the third piece is the learning walk team. And Brian, as Brian can attest, three, three days this year, we've had a learning walk team that went through the school to collect data around our instructional focus this year, which was complex learning in the classroom. So we're, we're collecting some really authentic data. It's not just about SATs and ACTs and MCAS. It's about what are students doing in class and what are teachers doing to elicit engagement and understanding and learning in class? And the goal is to identify best practice so that we're then spreading that best practice throughout the school, ideally throughout the district. One of the metaphors, if you will, that I'd like to use is that we are professionals, as doctors are professionals. So how do you identify best practice in surgery? You go see a surgeon that's doing the cutting-edge work, no pun intended. How do you identify it in the classroom? You go into the classroom and see those teachers who are doing the great work and then you spread that best practice, just like doctors do in their profession. And that's really the model we've established at East Hampton High School. We collaborate, we support each other, and I think the environment is, is just hugely positive as that AIR report would attest and the recognition we're getting from the state attests. So I'm, I'm really excited. You can see me getting excited up here. I'm very excited about the work we're doing. I'm excited about the professionals I, I am blessed to, to work with. And we have a great staff at the high school and I think we're doing wonderful things. So I'll, any questions you might have about any of those three, I'd be glad to entertain.
Next time you go to the presentation.
This report is so impressive. It really is. Everything, I mean, everything you've had to say, every, your plan, this documentation is really truly impressive.
And it's just serendipity. It came out, you know, the, the week before Superintendent Fowles, he asked me to do this and I was like, oh, can I use this? And I was just very excited that they allowed me to use this as an artifact to, to, to bring, at least for two of the three.
Nice.
And we're clearly very proud of the work that's being done at the high school. Our, our teachers have just done amazing work and our administrators. And it's just wonderful that you all are being recognized for the hard work you're doing.
So you, you may have said this before. When do you anticipate the final report being?
We're, we're kind of in that iteration period. So they send us a draft. We answer some questions.
I see the comments in the.
Yeah. So we've finished our comments. That, those were the last comments.
So are these comments are comments that you're making back to them? Gotcha.
And then the ones that say P U B S, that's for their pub, their editors and their publishers. So then once those things are done, then it'll be, it'll be completed and it'll be disseminated and shared.
And again, I apologize that, did you say how many of the school districts that are going through a similar sort of reporting procedure were part of?
We're the only school that's being invited to the spring convening.
Okay.
All the others are district, district models of best practice.
Okay.
This is really a focus on professional development and it's, we're the only school that's being invited.
And how many are in this, the report that AIR is doing?
I think AIR is doing three districts and one school.
That's what I thought too.
And we're, we're the school. And then at the presentation in the spring, and this is a great opportunity just to get other, because Ms. Brown and myself went and presented at the fall and that kind of started all this. And at that, at that presentation in October, the, the commissioner actually recognized the work that was being done. And then I think that's what kind of prompted some questions, hey, would you be interested in? And so of course I was very interested in and Superintendent gave me the permission to, to move forward with it.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Thanks for the great work you're doing.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Napolitano, we'll now have a report by Ms. Napolitano, the principal of Center and Peppin Schools.
So I was, just a quick comment. I was at the spring convening when the Commissioner of Education recognized East Hampton High School with the good work that they were doing. It was really exciting to be there, to be a part of that and hear the commissioner recognize that. So I agree that that's, it's great work that the high school's doing, so. The document that you have is just my three school improvement goals. I don't have a fancy report to submit to you tonight. It's my three school improvement goals. And those three goals this year are improving the instructional core, improving school culture and improving community engagement. Those are my three goals. In order to improve the instructional core, my goal has been focused on professional development for staff and being able to observe in the classroom the practices that were taught during that professional development time. Judy Avril and I have worked really hard to make sure that our professional development is consistent between the, the elementary schools so that we're all on the same page and learning the same practices to use in classrooms. We've been able to modify our original PD plan after looking at data from previous MCAS tests and also school-based data to make sure that we are truly focused on doing professional development that is relevant to what the data is showing we need to work on. We've also been piloting a new program in a portion of our ELA block and have used our professional development time to discuss that program and how it supports our students. So that's one of the really exciting initiatives that we've been working on with our professional development this year. For my second goal, the creating a culture of reflective practice, high expectations and core values, we've been looking at data from parent surveys and teacher surveys to create plans for improvement. Our data from the parent survey showed that an overwhelming number of parents say that the best thing about Center Peppin is the administration, staff and teachers. I think for 45% of the responses about what's the best thing about the school was all about the people that work there, which is really incredible. One of the things that we found was that most parents are looking for more communication from the school, specifically information about what their kids are learning in classrooms. They get updated about the events that are happening, but they really want to know about what's happening in classrooms, what kids are learning and how they're learning it also to support them at home. So my school council will use this data to help me create my school improvement goals for the following year. And working on my third goal, the community engagement part, I've been attending PTO meetings, scheduling school council meetings, attending the kindergarten playdates and the kindergarten information night. A quick plug for anyone who has a five-year-old that has not registered for kindergarten, please, please register. You can pick up registration packets at either Center Peppin or Maple School. That's going to be, we're working really hard to make sure that we know exactly how many kindergartners we have coming in to us so that there are no surprises over the summer. We're really hoping to get everyone registered by the end of the school year. We also have events scheduled for the spring, including our Center Peppin Gallery Night. We have a local artist that's been working with our students who, they will be putting on a gallery show. Our cultural fest, which is coming up on April 30th and our end-of-the-year performances. And those things I will be advertising for community members and families to attend so that especially our incoming kindergarten students, to sort of get them into the door in these sorts of low-key kinds of ways and get them introduced to our school and our school community. So with that, if there's any questions, go right ahead.
I, I was just curious, when you did the survey number one under goal two, did that, did, did that data come in in a way that you were able to share it with the, because it's a broader topic that we've talked about of accessing that information district-wide. And I'm wondering if the, the, if you believe that was a successful survey in terms of getting good information back, could we model other, what can we learn from the success of that survey to get the information at, at other points?
Right. I believe that the superintendent has been working on a, a bunch of surveys and we were being very aware that we don't want to do survey overload. So I think that, so, so what, we're, we're trying to translate what we've been doing in some of our surveys in the schools into a bigger picture. So I think the answer to your question is yes, that's in process of, of trying to make this a bigger picture kind of thing to get more information from families about what, what their, their choices are and then also what their feelings are about the students and their, in East Hampton and what they're doing, what they want to see from our schools.
And who, who, in addition to you and the superintendent, views the surveys? At the school council looks at the survey results?
Yes.
So the document exists somewhere. I'm wondering if that could be available for people on the school committee to all?
So we're still working on it. At Center Peppin, they drafted a school choice survey.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the other survey.
That's the one you're talking about.
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and so they drafted one, a very nice survey. But at that point, at the point of time that it was drafted, I think Ms. Napolitano realized that our art outreach committee was also doing a survey. She had done a survey at Center and Peppin Schools. So she and I had a conversation about rather than having this, this choice survey be only for Center Peppin, that we would send it out to families in, in all schools.
So is it survey four then, that number four that you're referring to? And the, I'm just looking at the document that you've given us under goal two. There's a survey that you referred to in number one, send the survey to parents. Are you saying that that survey?
That one, that one was.
Funhold to go out district-wide.
Okay, so that's, that is going to go out district-wide, but it hasn't gone out yet. So we haven't gotten the data on it. Gotcha. Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry, number four. That is the one that I was referring about.
You were talking about the one that's number four. That was what I was uncertain about. Thank you.
And that already has gone out.
And that one has gone out and I do have that information.
Right. And that one is the one where these are parents who are, whose students, families whose students are in the schools and that positive feedback there about how we can modify current practice to satisfy the concerns of people that we currently have.
Absolutely.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yes.
Can you just describe a little bit about what the TELS survey is?
Oh, sure. The TELS survey is a survey that is open to all schools in Massachusetts every two years. And it gives us a variety of feedback from, it's for teachers to take. And the teachers report about school environment, about how they feel like they, what kind of voice they feel like they have in the district and also in the school. So it's a lot about school culture, school environment, that sort of thing. And so we take that every two years. So last year, we had a good report that has, it's 50 or 60 questions long that has all of these different ways to, to look at the information about how teachers feel about their schools and about their school buildings. So what we did as a school data team was we took some of, or as a school council, we took some of those questions and asked them again a second year in a row because we had made changes by the time that the survey was taken and the time that the results came out. So we wanted to see if we had made changes and made a positive impact on, based on the changes that we had made, whether those were, would show up in a subsequent survey. So without giving a 60-question survey, again, I think we asked 10 or 12 questions about how they were feeling about things like communication between administration and teachers, about the culture, about the ways that teachers felt supported in classrooms and that sort of thing. And we got some, we were able to ask more specific questions. So we got some very specific directions to head into, as well as some suggestions that some of the things that we had been putting in place had been effective. So it was a good, it was sort of like a brief capture of this much larger survey. And then the TELS survey will be done again next year. So this was sort of that gap year to sort of see if the things that we had been doing had made an impact on how teachers were feeling about working in our schools.
Is that something that happens in every building, district-wide, or just?
The state puts this survey out and they really strongly advise that we try to get as many teachers as possible in every building to take the survey because they only will report the results back to us if there's a certain percentage of stu, of teachers who have taken the survey. And it's useful information for us, but we can't force our teachers to do it. So what we do is we send out lots of memos and lots of encouragement and in some buildings we get better buy-in than in others. But we have found that it gives us some very interesting information that we can use to help improve the culture and climate in our schools for, for our staff, which ultimately has an impact on our students as well and our families.
And then at Center Peppin, some of the things that we had put into place are more behavioral supports. Some of the, we had been, we're, our, the assistant principals doing a check-in, check-out program that really targets some of the students that were having behavioral difficulties. So we wanted to see if those made teachers feel like they were being more supported in the classroom and, and those scores did indeed go up. So it was good to know that the efforts that we had been putting in place, based on the results of the first TELS survey and based on just what we knew needed to happen within the school, were showing a positive impact on some of the questions that we asked later the second time around.
So the questions when you asked in the second time around are the same? And these are the questions that the state establishes?
We asked a, a version of them. We, in some cases, we wanted more specific information. So the, the question maybe, does administration help you? And I know a lot of the teachers, when they took the survey, were questioning, well, does that mean district level? Does that mean school level? So we made them very specific so that we could get the information that we were looking for, which was what, what school-wide can we improve?
So are the questions similar enough year, every two years by every two years that we could look at the data over time?
Yes, I believe they're exactly the same. I don't think they make changes.
Right. That's, that's what I understood because I recall this conversation before. And the, and the access to these survey results, the raw data that comes in, is available here?
To the school district, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to our matters for action.
Okay. Motion to approve the minutes for the school committee, sorry, the public hearing meeting on March 24th of 2015?
Second. All those in favor? Aye.
And then a motion to approve the school committee meeting on March 10th, 2015.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Terrific. Okay. So I think that's set there. All right. Yep, sorry. And then. I, oh, we do have a lot and all kinds of stickies everywhere. Okay. So first, motion to approve payroll, school payroll in the amount of $475,000, $416.81. Yes, $475,000, $416.81. That's for the payroll dated 3/19/2015.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Abstentions?
Motion to, oh wow, this one's, the accounts payable authorization dated the 19th of March, 2015 in the amount of $223,973.15.
Second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Payroll authorization. Hang on a second.
I think she usually just reads the pink sheets.
Hang on. That's a deal. Because these are, there appear to be duplicates here. Sorry. Like I said, it's been a while, but we did that, $223,973? Yep. Okay. So that one's all done. Okay. We'll skip down to the next pink sheet. Sheekers. Uh huh. I moved to approve the school payroll dated the 2nd of April, 2015 in the amount of $474,722.22.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Abstentions?
Sorry, I was voting aye. Sorry, there's no accounts payable for that period. This is the accounts pay, a payable authorization. So I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated the 9th of April 2015 in the amount of $9,981.38.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
These are the ones I really like. I move to approve the school payroll dated the 16th of April 2015 in the amount of $455,343.37.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Abstention?
Aye.
And I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for the payment dated April 16th, 2015 in the amount of $340,531.69.
Second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. It's all written out now. That's so user-friendly. Last time I was here, you had to translate it from the numbers. I didn't even realize it's all written out right there. I think that's it for warrants and payroll. That jibe with your?
That's the last page.
I think so. I mean, we've got a lot of signing to do tonight. No one's going anywhere for the next hour, but...
And just so everyone knows, certain individuals on the committee come in and review and approve the details of all of this in the, in between our meeting times each week, or mostly weekly. Anyway, okay, moving on to our out-of-state field trip request for East Hampton High School going to Paris. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip request for Ms. Mango to Paris on April 15, 2016 through April 22, 2016.
Second.
So I have questions about this.
Discussion, okay.
Not surprisingly, because I had a lot of questions the last time and remember that I was the one, no vote the last time, although I've offered to make a contribution to support it in the event that goes ahead. Part of what I'm trying to clarify is this field trip request, that one that's in front of us now, occurs entirely within the school vacation week. It's while school is not in session. Is that correct? Right, that was what I understood, 4/15?
We have the calendar. We have the calendar in here.
Right, and then the other one would occur...
The 15th is a Friday.
The 15th is a Friday.
Couple days before and after.
Right, and the other one, so I guess, I'm, I'm really not trying to hold up the good work of these teachers who clearly are offering great things. My concerns are, are about access. As I expressed before, I have a concern about endorsing programs that we know students can't access, particularly the previous one, because it also involved the teacher missing time away from school, right? So the students who don't go, not only don't get to go, but they don't get the teacher because the teacher goes out of the school district during school days. And in, in one of the remarks tonight, there was the comment about seeking funds from ELF. And I'm, part of why I was asking for Dr. Perron to clarify his understanding of the two programs is if you come before ELF and they have a limited amount of money, certainly the endorsement of the school committee speaks to the quality of what's being asked for. And I'm wondering if ELF is getting the proper guidance from us about where they might apportion their limited resources. I can't speak for them, but I do think that when we vote yes, it carries, carries a consequence. And since the two programs are different, I wondered if that difference matters enough in terms of our endorsement of them.
So I, I can speak about ELF. I'm now on the, the ELF committee that makes decisions about where the grants, which grants are funded, so that I get information from building administrators and of course, there is the grant proposal. And then I supply whatever, you know, information they ask me questions about. So the, the school department does have a voice now in that selection process where it really wasn't the case before as much. So it's a nice process. In terms of these out-of-district field trips, you know, I believe that the, the school committee's function is, is really to ask the questions about the trips and also to, really to approve whether you think that this, these trips are educationally sound and whether our students will be safe and have an experience that's going to improve their education. I think that that's really primarily what school committee approval is, is sought for when, when we, because you have many, many of these requests for out-of-state and, and fewer for out-of-the-country, but it's really about the educational worthiness of these trips and also to make sure that our students are safe, you know, when they travel out of our state. So I, I think those are the parameters primarily and also clearly to, you know, for your benefit to get information about the, the trips, which I think you've gotten tonight and, and in the last presentation.
I guess I'm less certain about the function of the school committee to not consider the cost. It seems to me like that's relevant to something that we endorse that involves a teacher going out of the, out of the school, right? It comes back to, at that point, we hire, right, correct, we hire superintendent, we, we hire substitutes to cover when these teachers are away. So we are actually, even if it's just that little bit, whatever the cost may be, there aren't a lot of trips that come before us that are for $2,700 to $3,600. So I, I guess I differ on that. I do think it's within the purview of the school committee to take into consideration the cost of what we're endorsing for the students who will participate in it and the fact that it would have a cost to the school district. And, and I, I still think that the cost of, of a program that, that takes, because the cost is the only thing that determines the access, well, no, it's not the only thing that determines the access. There may be other reasons why a student might not qualify for the program that Mr. Benoit is offering. Excuse me for mispronouncing his name, I apologize. There are other criteria there as well, but I think we would all agree that $2,700 to $3,600 is a big factor in who goes and who doesn't go. And so we are, we are endorsing something that's going to be more or less inclusive depending on the amount of resources. I had put forward a proposal that I think we're going to be talking about later on tonight, that if we endorse trips that we believe are such tremendous educational value and, and keeping, and cognizant of what we were told this evening about the importance of the students having an investment in, in, or a sense of responsibility by using their own money, I still think that the, that the issue of access is, is going to be crucial to, to, to these trips. Doesn't mean that we shouldn't offer things just because everybody in the community can't afford it. That's why I put forward the, the suggestion that for anyone who's on, who qualifies for free lunch, that we would make up the difference and anyone who's on reduced lunch, that we would provide 50% of the funds. Because I think we're putting our money where our mouth is then. We're saying, this is a great program, it's wonderful, everybody has applauded both programs. But we know that, you know, for some families, there's no amount of, of, of small-scale fundraising that's going to close that gap. And that's why I come back to the question of ELF. And if you are serving on the decision-making committee, it's a, it's a hypothetical, I'm not asking you to respond to it, but I can imagine you have a, a limited pie in front of you, superintendent, and you can only endorse one program or the other. You can only provide financial aid for one or the other. I suppose you could split it, but if splitting it meant nobody goes, because there wouldn't be enough, that if we could only give a, a financial aid scholarship to, to a student to do one or the other, our endorsement would make a difference. If we endorse one program and we don't endorse the other, in terms of that decision-making, I, I would think. So that's why I think it's important for us to consider the issue of, of access. These are great programs and I, I think it's wonderful, when I heard the discussion tonight about the idea of the Quebec Winter Carnival, because that's a less expensive trip that offers a lot of the, of the values that these trips outline, but would be accessible to a far larger number of our students. And from my perspective, if something's accessible to a larger number of students, having the teacher leave class for something, you know, teachers leave class for, obviously when they're ill or, or have family emergencies where they have to, or when they're doing professional development. But when they go do professional development, they're, they're usually not taking some of the students in class with them.
I think you could argue though, that taking students on a, an educational trip in the particular teacher's field is professional development.
Sure, oh yeah, but it's, but it's student benefit that I'm talking about there. The only student who benefits is the student who can afford to go. The student who stays behind doesn't benefit from that immediate experience.
So I think that, it sounds to me like there are two issues here, Peter. See if I'm correct. One is the concern about the cost of substitutes if teachers are away on a trip with students or professional development or that, some of those things that you mentioned. I think that, you know, we make decisions all throughout the year about sending teachers on professional development opportunities, on field trips with students, and so, you know, they are going to be away and we are going to have substitutes. We, we make decisions about substitute teachers constantly during their school year in all schools. So I think that it's important for our building administrators to really weigh all the factors in allowing teachers to be out of the school for, for whatever reasons they happen to be. The other one that I think you're talking about is the funding and how much, the cost of the different trips and how we provide equal opportunities to all of our students for these trips. And that hasn't been part of decisions that have been made in the past about out-of-district or out-of-country trips. So I just wonder if that wouldn't be something to take to our policy subcommittee, to have them examine these issues and come forward with recommendations on it, as opposed to making those decisions on a case-by-case basis. Just, just some thoughts that I'm having as I'm, I'm listening.
Well, I'd like to respond to each of those in turn. I want to be really clear about the question of the, I think that the fact that the, a trip that has teachers leaving the classroom goes back to the point about whether or not, considering the financing related to this, is relevant to the school committee. That's all. I'm talking about, I think that the teachers that we've met are phenomenal and I would be impressed if any school building administrator is going to be able to find a substitute that's going to offer the same quality experience in class as the teachers we've met. So my point is that when we endorse the teacher leaving with some of the students and that that some of is a function of their ability to finance the trip, not academic ability or, or some other thing that would be, to me, a more open field, that what we're doing is we're privileging one group at the expense of another. And that I think we should be careful about doing that because it's, sure, it's a good idea, these are great trips. And one of the ways that we would avoid that concern from my perspective is for us to, prior to or coincident with approving these, to approve some form of financial aid. That would allay that concern because then it would just come back to anyone who's willing to go, who's willing to make the investment. And I'd be less concerned about the student who's unwilling to take advantage of this opportunity than I am about the student who's unable, whose family is, is unable to take these kinds of trips. And that, that they're not having access to the privilege, because we can't simultaneously talk up how terrific these are without making the point that those who don't get to go are missing out on something. And one trip occurs when school is not in session and I think that puts it in a different position than the other one. So that's the, the, the point that I'm trying to emphasize. And I, I, again, I think these are great. I think what we heard about going forward in the future, something that will be more affordable for more students, is more consistent with the kind of school system that we are and the kind of approach that we take to offering educational opportunity to all of our students. And so, you know, that, that's the concern that, that I have as I, as I have been deliberating how to vote this evening and reflecting back on the vote that we had before. So thank you for your patience in hearing me out on those things.
Lori?
I think Ms. Mango explained it well, that they would help with any fundraisers, like a spaghetti dinner. I mean, that could raise some decent amount of money for a student to be able to go. So, and I'm sure Mr. Benoit will do the same thing for his as well. So I think there's other opportunities for a student to be able to raise that money, as well as the fact, how she discussed, it does help if the student works on raising that money, as opposed to just being given a scholarship. And while I understand what you're saying, Peter, my concern would be, well, what if you get, you know, 10 students who can't afford it and want to go? Where are we going to come up with all that money? I mean, how would we decide on just, you know, the one student that we offer some sort of, not a scholarship, but an award to? But it seems like if they, if they earn that money, they'll enjoy and appreciate the trip better. So I think, I feel that they have ways to help those that can't afford the $2,700 to be able to kind of have some compensating monies go towards it.
And I would, I would just add, I, I would guess that there aren't very many families at all that could just say, here you go, go on this trip, take this money, that most families of a variety of economic backgrounds, the student is going to be involved in either earning or raising that money. If you look at East Hampton, I just think that that's likely the case for most all students, that, that there'd be very, very rarely a situation where a family would just say, here's the money, sure, go ahead and go. And, and from my own personal experience as a student in an exchange program, I'd have to say a huge benefit of the effort was in raising the funds and in working hard and working with your fellow students, trying to achieve a goal, a lot of bonding, a lot of hard work, a lot of appreciation for the trip, like, like has been previously stated. So I see a, a lot of benefit in going through that process and being unified in that situation and being a team going forward and creating that opportunity.
And have a year to do it.
And a year to do it, right. Right, it's all part of the process and part of the rewarding nature of the experience.
And I agree, and the other thing that I wanted to mention, you know, the, the concern that this one is, school vacation, and where the other trip is not, that is the one that is more of an educational. And there's a lot more involved than that where you would host the student here. So there still is a, a part that the, the students could be involved in on this end. And I just think they're, you know, just two completely different issues. They're wonderful opportunities and it seems like no matter what, there still is some type of an involvement that you could have and a year of planning.
And the time away for the exchange program, it sounded as though it was one or two days prior to the vacation week and maybe a day after, but not a significant amount of time. And I do think those types of things happen frequently when they're all in-state trips that we're not even aware of, that, you know, a, a teacher will take a group of interested students to whatever event and there is a substitute and that happens pretty often. And...
Could I ask then for one piece, since we've talked a lot about data-driven, to, to support the confidence that the committee's expressed in the access to this, could we do a, a name-excluded assessment of the percentage of people who participate in these trips who are not on free or reduced lunch? Because that would confirm our speculation. If we found that there was a spread, then, then it would confirm our sense that if people really want to go, they can just work and make the money and then they can go. And that would be good. That would, that would allay my concern, certainly, because then we'd have data that would back that up. And I'm not asking, and I'm using a simple rubric that we already have access to, right? We already have access to that information. It may not be perfect information, but I don't know that any of the data that we use here is perfect for what we use. We take it and it gives us an indication. I think the success of the initiatives that have been suggested about fundraising would be confirmed by data that said, yes, the, the corresponding percentage of students who are on free and reduced lunch show up on these, on these trips.
I'm just not sure that the definition of free and reduced lunch is a definition that's well-suited to the affordability of the trips for families. But what I'm thinking is maybe we should postpone this discussion for another time. Lori?
Well, I just wanted to say, I'm not so concerned about that. I would be more concerned if students weren't going on these trips.
Exactly.
And I know every year, they have, I mean, 10 to 15, I mean, how many?
I believe there were over, I think there were 21 on the trip to Spain last night.
Yeah, so I mean, every year, they're getting a big group of students going. And, you know, if this exchange program doesn't work, it doesn't work, right? I mean, but, so I'm, I'm not concerned about the free and reduced lunch part of it, it's just our students use, you know, going to these programs.
And I guess I'm a little concerned with using that type of data because what would you do if it came back unfavorably? Then not allow it, not allow an opportunity to people? I think there's opportunities that are allowed at all different times in your life, all different places in your life, and there's abilities to work for, toward them. And I'm not so sure that... not so sure that I would, you know, what, what would the end result be? Make you feel better, or make you say, yes, I'm, I don't agree? So I don't really know if that's data that I would want to base an opportunity on.
I think Peter's point is spot-on, that this affects the policies and the finances, and that's why we look at it. If we didn't need to look at these, we'd just be wasting everybody's time every time we get one. That said, I don't think this is, these are the trips to make the examples of. If there's going to be some big policy or big finance overhaul or new situation, then it's a new agenda topic, it's a subcommittee, something, for a subcommittee to research and dig their teeth into those kinds of datas and ideas. There could be a cross-town trip that costs each kid $5, and that could be a struggle for some families. I mean, we don't know the finances, and I don't want to, of each student and their families, and what's going on with what field trip, but to, you know, the idea of sponsoring kids for any of those $5 trips or $3,000 trips would be a serious conversation for the finance subcommittee, for the policy subcommittee, for everybody, that I don't think we can get into tonight, but I think it's important that you bring it up, because that's why we look at these, because they do have those effects on the whole district, so...
I, I agree, the subcommittee is always a, a great place to really look things, look things over in detail and discussion, but I just have a quick question. Is, is this new? We, you know, like, to me, like, I mean, my children are way past high school age, and this has been happening for many years. I mean, mine went to, you know, Europe in, in high school, and I, this, it was a lot of years ago. So I don't understand what the real, I mean, this isn't a new issue coming to us, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I guess that's kind of where my concern is? You know, what, what is the issue when, to me, this is, I hate to say, but pretty much standard procedure in any school I know, where, you know, they're allowed to take these types of trips. So I don't know why we're kind of dissecting it quite so much, and maybe because, maybe because for the first time, there's two that are kind of similar, but I guess I really don't see, you know, all the detail put into this. I think it's wonderful opportunities, and we have administrators and educators that want to take part in this and have gone above and beyond, and I just think it's, I think it's fantastic. I think it's a wonderful opportunity and plenty of time to prepare.
Are we ready to vote? We have a motion, and we have it seconded. Are we ready to move forward?
I am.
I am.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstained? Opposed? Abstentions?
And then, I'm sorry, I'm completely out of lights now.
Oh, that's okay.
So it's school calendar.
Next, we have the school calendar.
Updated.
As you'll notice, there's changes that have been made.
So, motion to approve...
I'm so sorry, we missed the 31st. Did we miss the 31st? I mean, the 31st?
Uh, yes.
I am so sorry. No, we've all looked at that. When I saw that, I'm like, oh my goodness.
So, motion to, to make changes to the 2015, 2016 East Hampton Public School Calendar.
Second. All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you.
The next is on the school choice district.
School choice district.
So it's a motion that we, that we participate in the school choice program. And again, I apologize that my power's gone out here, so does somebody have a written copy?
We don't have a written document of that, I don't believe.
Do you put a document? I think we just need to make a motion.
Okay. Motion that, that the East Hampton Public Schools, remember, remain a school choice district.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions?
And then, I'm sorry, I'm completely out of lights now.
Oh, that's okay.
So it's school calendar.
Next, we have the school calendar.
Updated.
As you'll notice, there's changes that have been made.
So, motion to approve...
I'm so sorry, we missed the 31st. Did we miss the 31st? I mean, the 31st?
Uh, yes.
I am so sorry. No, we've all looked at that. When I saw that, I'm like, oh my goodness.
So, motion to, to make changes to the 2015, 2016 East Hampton Public School Calendar.
Second. All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you.
The next is on the school choice district.
School choice district.
So it's a motion that we, that we participate in the school choice program. And again, I apologize that my power's gone out here, so does somebody have a written copy?
We don't have a written document of that, I don't believe.
Do you put a document? I think we just need to make a motion.
Okay. Motion that, that the East Hampton Public Schools, remember, remain a school choice district.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay.
And then we have a budget transfer request for special education.
Yes, I'm sorry, Peter.
Yep, sorry. And so this is a, a reallocation of funds that has been requested by Mr. Paquette and endorsed by the superintendent. You could say more about what that is.
Certainly. So Mr. Paquette is doing the, kind of the year-end closeout of funding sources, and reallocating monies that were not used during this year's budget to help us offset the special education tuition costs. So the money that is being reallocated is from last year's summer school program. More funding was allocated to that program than was needed, remained in the accounts, and now as we're getting closer to the end of the year, we're looking at monies that can be shifted over. And as you know, we have a deficit in our special education tuition accounts. So this money's being, the request is to transfer that money into the line items that will help offset the special education tuitions.
So, motion to approve a budget transfer request in the amount of $13,365.44 for a realoc, reallocation of funds to cover deficits.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
And the last is a surplus equipment from the technology department. Right. I think this is a request by Mr. Barstow that the following items, and there's a number of switches and printers and desktops and projectors and monitors here, and that the, that they be disposed of via recycling. So motion to approve that and the, I'm sorry, that's the detail on the previous one. So motion to approve the request to mark the, declare this as surplus equipment to allow for it to be recycled.
Second. I'd just like to mention, too, that most of this equipment is outdated, missing pieces are broken.
Right.
So, just so...
Doesn't look like anything that anybody would want.
Nothing that anybody would want, yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
And I just want to be correct, that before a work session, we adjourn, we don't